Order. Our organizational, our annual organizational meeting. I want to let members of the public know who are here for what seems like a public address, that we do have to have an organizational meeting because we've just elected a new school committee prior to our committee being able to take any action. And so, I can't tell you how long that will take, but it will be a relatively brief meeting. You know, 20 minutes, half hour, maybe, but surely an hour or less. And we apologize for any inconvenience that that may cause you. Before we begin, I want to take this opportunity to welcome a few new members. First of all, Stacy Jackson from Holden. Does everybody know Stacy there? And Michael Pantos from Rutland, our new member. And Rob Pelzarsky from Paxton as well, our new member. Also, I want to congratulate our re-elected members, Bob Carter and Margaret Watson from Holden, as well as, as well as Sherry Conrad and Norman Plourd from Sterling. Before we get into our agenda, I do want to just take a few moments and to acknowledge some of our guests this evening. We have in attendance this evening Chief Sherrill from the Holden Police Department, as well as Dave Armstrong from Holden Police. They're accompanying Anthony Gribbins from Holden PD, Jonathan Santamore, as well as Albert Bourget. It's no secret that the school district had a very difficult incident occur at Sunnyside Avenue, a very, a very, hopefully we believe now and forever, an out-of-character fight that occurred off our campus. I think the school committee did a great job as we worked through this issue administratively in order to deal with, with, with the disciplinary issues before us. But none of that really would have been possible, and it wouldn't have been possible for the community to move past this event, had it not been for the great detective work and the great legwork and legal work done by the Holden PD, and especially Anthony Gribbins, Jonathan Santamore, and Al Bourget. And I just want to take a moment to allow Chief Sherrill, just a couple of minutes, to make some comments about, about his police force and the work they did relative to that event.
Good evening, Chief Sherrill from the Holden Police Department. As you all know, on April 14th, there was a fight just outside the Wachusett Regional High School boundaries. And the three officers that Tom mentioned responded, and within 48 hours, through their investigation, had located and apprehended all four of the subjects involved in the fight. It was a very trying time for the police department, for the school, for the district, due to the nature and the severity of the assault. But Tom and I have worked together, as Dave Armstrong and several of the officers have over the years, and we were all on the same page together, which is so important. We were communicating between ourselves, between staff members, administration, we were all on the same page. And those years of our partnership really paid off in this event. I can't say enough about the three officers involved. They took the investigation, ran with it, contacted people from the Worcester Police Department, helped make identifications. And as you know, those are all pending in court now, but it was a very complete thorough investigation, I think, based upon our partnership with the school district, which is so, so important in our community.
Thank you, Chief Sherrill. At this time, we invited these officers here to make a public commendation of their work, and at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to that effect.
I'd like to move that we commend Albert Bourget, Jonathan Santamore, and Anthony Gribbins, three members of the Holden Police Department, for the outstanding work they did in order to investigate and to bring to justice those individuals involved in the fight that took place on Sunnyside Avenue on April 14th, 2008. Their prompt and thorough investigation was an important step for the Wachusett community to take in bringing closure to this unfortunate incident. The Wachusett Regional School District School Committee thanks and commends these officers for their efforts on behalf of our community.
John Nunnery second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
I think it's unanimous. Great job, guys. Now we'll move to, do we have ballots? Now we'll move to our order of business in the organizational meeting. First, my first and only duties this evening is to get you a new chair. I'll lead you through that process. For those of you who haven't been on the committee, or for those of you who don't remember, we'll take nominations. We'll spend a period of time discussing those nominations, allowing people to make as many statements as they'd like about either their own candidacy, or the candidacy of someone who's been nominated. All votes are taken in, for chair, are taken by paper ballot, so I'll distribute paper ballots. Each paper ballot is individualized by member, and must be signed by member, and will be included, your signed vote will be included as part of the public record. So it's very important, we've had some minor, minor blips on the radar screen relative to this one, as people didn't sign their votes, and, and, and we lost the ability to count those votes. So, you know, that, that's basically the procedure, and at this time, I'd like to call for nominations from the floor for any member to be nominated as our next chair.
All right.
Just go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Pandecio. Margaret Watson has been an exemplary leader for the school committee during the past two years. Her grasp of the underlying issues that affect the committee's business, her control over the meeting process itself, and her sensible intuition in recommending and facilitating committee action have resulted in an immeasurable improvement in this committee's efficiency and effectiveness. Additionally, Ms. Watson brings to her role a lifelong commitment to public education, and a deep understanding of the complexities inherent not only in achieving the district's stated goals, but also in developing policies that provide a meaningful foundation for these goals. As if that weren't enough, Ms. Watson has cultivated, through an extraordinary commitment of her personal time, a productive and respectful working relationship with both the district administration and the elected leadership of our member towns. She is unfailingly professional and responsive among local officials and community members alike, displaying the thoughtful and deliberative demeanor of a dedicated public servant who values civil discourse. All these qualities, together with a rather eclectic millinery sense, combine to make Margaret Watson an outstanding choice to lead this committee for another year. With pleasure, I nominate Margaret Watson for Chair of the Wachusett Regional School District Committee.
Second. Other nominations?
No, I was, that was very elegant. I was just going to say she does a darn good job.
I move the nominations to be closed.
I'll second.
Moved by Duncan Leath and seconded by Melinda Coyle, the nomination should be closed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I have a statement I'd like to read? If that's all right.
There might be some people here who don't know. Here is a brief statement of my priorities. First, to assist the school committee in accomplishing the district business in a fair and efficient manner. Two, to maintain a good professional working relationship with the superintendent and the administration. Three, to assist the school committee in seeking and maintaining quality education for district students while husbanding resources with care. If it is your wish, I'm willing to serve as Chair of the Wachusett School Committee for another year. If not, I will support the individual you may select at this time. And thank you all for your encouragement and support.
Bob. Colleen. Shirley. Melinda. Steve. Bob. Stacy Jackson. Mark Sapsen. Duncan. John. Mike. Rob. Norman. Mike. Joe. Margaret. And that's it?
Thank you.
Robert Imber votes for Margaret Watson. Margaret Watson votes for Margaret Watson. Duncan Leath votes for Margaret Watson. John Nunnery votes for Margaret Watson. Mike Pantos votes for Margaret Watson. Colleen Cipro votes for Margaret Watson. Melinda Coyle votes for Margaret Watson. Cynthia Bazanet votes for Margaret Watson. Stephen Hammond votes for Margaret Watson. Stacy Jackson votes for Margaret Watson. Norman Plourd votes for Margaret Watson. Joseph Solva votes for Margaret Watson. Robert Carter votes for Margaret Watson. Thomas Ackerman votes for Margaret Watson. Rob Pelzarsky votes for Margaret Watson. Shirley Conrad votes for Margaret Watson. And Michael Sherman votes for Margaret Watson. Congratulations.
has been a very good committee to work with for the past two years. There is a lot of talent sitting around this table. And when we pool our efforts, we do a great deal of constructive work. So I look forward to another very good year working with you. Thank you. We now have the task before us of electing a vice chair. Cynthia. Nominations are open.
If I were a sports fan, I am certain that I would be able to come up with the perfect metaphor to describe John Nunnery's value to this committee. But alas, I am not a fan of sports. I am more a fan of Eugene O'Neill, whose works unfortunately are unlikely to contain the metaphor I seek. So I have opted for a popular culture metaphor I suspect most around this table will appreciate. John Nunnery is the ever-ready bunny of the Wachusett Regional School District Committee. Prepared to go the distance each and every time, Mr. Nunnery has proved there simply isn't a task for a subcommittee too contentious or tedious for him. With equanimous aplomb, professorial patience, and dispassionate analysis, Mr. Nunnery has unfailingly offered a guiding hand through some of this committee's most difficult times. As well, he has been the go-to guy for years when things needed to get done. As a result, he offers this committee a seasoned voice of reason and purpose, always acknowledging all sides of an issue and giving, giving every problem or question thoughtful consideration. His wealth of historic knowledge, as well as his willingness to devote shocking amounts of time and energy to the needs of this committee, make him an excellent candidate to assist the leadership moving forward. I nominate John Nunnery for Vice Chair of the Wachusett Regional School District Committee.
Second.
Nomination made by Cynthia Bazanet, seconded by Duncan Leath. Shirley Conrad.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Norman Plourd for Vice Chair. Basically, I'm a business person, so I'm pretty brief and succinct.
But our bylaws state the duty of the vice chair is to exercise the powers and perform the duties of the chair in the chair's absence. It's important to have a vice chair who can step in when necessary and run a fair and orderly meeting. As we all know, Margaret has done an excellent job the past two years, and it's a very high standard. Norman Plourd has been on the committee since 1992. He seldom misses regular, special, or subcommittee meetings. During that time, he's held positions on this committee. Well, I'm not sure if he was Chair of this committee at the time that I know when we were, uh, the high school, he was Chair. And he is very knowledgeable regarding the rules of order, which I think is important in my opinion. Thank you.
Is there a second, please? Seconded by Joe Solva. Thank you. Are there further nominations? Would any of the candidates like to make a statement? Mr. Nunnery?
First of all, Member Bazanet, for the kind remarks. Very flattered. To the committee, I'm not much of a speech maker, I don't, I probably won't do it here tonight, for sure. I will promise to support the chairman, and whatever the committee decides to do relative to any motion, I'll try to do the best that I can. I thank everyone for the chance.
I accept the nomination for the vice chairmanship of this committee. I am a longstanding member of this committee, representing Sterling for 14 years. I served as vice chairman once and twice as the chairman of the school committee. I have chaired the education subcommittee on three occasions, and have been a member of the subcommittee every year of my tenure. I engaged in research and provided information to the full committee on the superintendent's search procedure, as well as the evaluation of the superintendent, which was modified to its present form. I keep abreast of ongoing education changes, especially through MASC Info on the Internet. MASC Info also provides daily school committee concerns across the Commonwealth and the goings-on in the Department of Education. As a rule, this committee does rather well in its organizational skills and outcomes relative to other committees, both local and regional. Such observations shop in my monitoring of the Wachusett district. I understand the past, I work in the present, and I have concerns for the future. I have no personal agenda to bring to the table, except to be prepared to do the right thing at the right time. I will be an advocate for greater state aid to education, to relieve the pressure of the five communities. I am not alone in this regard. I will urge the school committee to become proactive to seek changes at the state level. The committee has engaged the help of our senators and representatives in the past with success. I believe that can be done again on a grander scale. I will have a proposal shortly. I am an advocate of a full-day kindergarten in the district. The success of the pilot program in Princeton should encourage a district-wide study of the possibility of providing such a program and service. I have been encouraged to pursue this endeavor by several constituents, both in and out of Sterling. I will have a proposal shortly. I tend to thrive in a leadership position dating back especially to my experience in the Army, while stationed at Fort Devens for 21 years. I introduce the color codes, especially the red sheets, for confidentiality. I will serve you well as the vice chair of this committee, as described in the bylaws. I am not presumptuous beyond that. I consider myself to be a member of a team of 20 players. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Would any member of the committee care to make additional statements? Are there any further nominations? Chair will entertain them.
The nominations should be closed.
Moved by Duncan Leath to close nomination, seconded by Steve Hammond. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstaining? You know. I have here the official ballots. Shirley Conrad votes for Norman Plourd. Thomas Ackerman votes for John Nunnery. Robert Pelzarsky votes for Norman Plourd. Michael Sherman votes for John Nunnery. Stacy Jackson votes for Norman Plourd. Norman Plourd votes for Norman Plourd. Robert Imber votes, votes for John Nunnery. Colleen Cipro votes for John Nunnery. John Nunnery votes for John Nunnery. Duncan Leath votes for John Nunnery. Melinda Coyle votes for John Nunnery. Cynthia Bazanet votes for John Nunnery. Stephen Hammond votes for John Nunnery. Michael Pantos votes for John Nunnery. Robert Carter votes for Norman Plourd. Joseph Solva votes for Norman Plourd. Margaret Watson votes for John Nunnery. Have you been keeping count, how much?
Eleven.
Eleven for John Nunnery, and six for... John Nunnery is declared elected. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Nay. Any abstaining? The organizational meeting is adjourned. Yeah, don't go anywhere, folks. Okay, well, call to order, regular meeting, 1,147, this being Tuesday, May the 27th, 2008. And we will have first the public hearing. I see that we have several speakers who have signed up this evening. I will read the guidelines for the public hearing. The Wachusett Regional School Committee welcomes community input through a public hearing session scheduled before all its regular meetings. Thoughtful and constructive public commentary is invaluable to the committee as it strives better to serve its schools and their students. To be fair to all, we ask that you follow these guidelines. First, please state your name and address. It would be helpful for you to state the purpose of your remarks. You may have the floor for up to three minutes. The public hearing is not a dialogue, it is an opportunity for you to welcome, for you to present your concerns and opinions to the Wachusett Regional School Committee. However, the chair may make a response at the conclusion of the speaker's comments, or recognize the superintendent to do the same. Please direct your remarks to the business and policies of the committee as a whole. Do not address individual members or approach members of the committee. Public hearings are conducted in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order. Permission to speak is granted by the chair under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 39, Section 23(c), which also establishes the chair's authority to maintain order. If a speaker must be called to order, the chair will issue a warning. If the warning goes unheeded, the speaker will be directed to withdraw. You are encouraged to hand the secretary a written transcript of your remarks, which will be appended to the minutes of this meeting and become part of the public record. Within a few days, you will receive a letter from the chair of the committee or an official of the district telling you how your concerns will be addressed. Thank you for your time and participation. At this time, we would like to welcome Ms. Ellen Chambers, who will speak to the topic Special Education.
Good evening, my name is Ellen Chambers. My address is River Road in Pepperell, Massachusetts. I am here tonight to comment on Wachusett's recently released Coordinated Program Review Report. SPEDWatch is an organization that I represent. We are a statewide organization, which is why I'm here, even though I live in Pepperell. We're a statewide nonprofit civil rights movement fighting to secure the educational rights of all Massachusetts students with disabilities. As I said, I'm here tonight to comment on the recently released Coordinated Program Review Report, which shows widespread and egregious violations of students' special education rights in the district. The violations recorded in this report are not simply pesky little paperwork violations. They are substantive violations that are depriving Wachusett students with special needs of their legal and moral right to an appropriate education. The students with disabilities in Wachusett are set up for failure right from the beginning. According to the compliance report, which is issued by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Wachusett is not properly evaluating its preschool-age children with special needs, and is not preparing appropriate educational plans for them. So, right from the tender age of three and four, these students are placed at very high risk for failure. At the other end of the spectrum, your older students with disabilities, those who are 16 through 21, are also being set up for failure. According to the report, again, the district is not following the laws which dictate the actions that school districts must take to transition students into the adult world of college and work. And what happens to students here in Wachusett, in between those two, two times, isn't really any better either. The district is providing special education services to its students with disabilities based on what the administration needs, not on what the student needs. The students are being educated in segregated and substandard locations. The district is not addressing the emotional, social, or behavioral needs of these children who have disabilities that give rise to that kind of difficulty in their development. The district is not properly tracking the students' progress. That means that a child could be failing, and you would never know it. You would just continue to spend dollars on services that are ineffective for that child, and the child would slip right through the cracks. You are allowing paraprofessionals to take a central role in the education of these children without first properly training them for that significant responsibility. You're allowing administrators to override team decisions, and you're not meeting regulatory timelines with regard to evaluation. What that means is that students can wait for badly-needed services far longer than is allowed by law. The human consequences of all of this are really nothing short of tragic. Students with disabilities in Wachusett are failing in huge...
The statement I make this evening represents the general consensus of a large group of parents of special-needs children in our district. We present one voice in that the result of the 2008 Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Coordinated Program Report for the Wachusett Regional School District is completely unacceptable, and that the complacency of the school committee towards special education must come to an end. Partially implemented is defined by Mass. Department of Elementary and Secondary Education means that the requirement in one or more, the requirement in one or several important aspects is not entirely met, or, in layman's terms, it is defined as noncompliance. The Wachusett Regional School District was found to be in noncompliance in 51 different criteria areas, which means that the district is breaking 51 different special education laws and regulations. The CPR team audited the district in June of 2007. In November of that same year, the team forwarded a copy of their draft report to district administration for clarifications of issues they had encountered, such that there would be no inaccuracies in the final report. During this time, we, parents of children with special needs, waited. We waited for comment and concerns from our school committee on the status of the coordinated review process. None came. The CPR team forwarded the copy of their final report to district administration on April 8, 2008. Surely, we thought our school committee would address the findings of the report in open meeting, and we eagerly awaited for those comments and concerns. None came. On April 23, the Mass., Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education posted the CPR report on their website for public viewing. We read this report with great concern and outright anger, as the report mirrored, as this report is the mirror image of findings of the 2001 coordinated review, with some aspects such as inclusion actually getting worse. While six years' time have passed, and thus ample time to correct the areas of noncompliance, our district had done little to nothing. We thought that even though our district administration places special education low on their priority list, our school committee would share our concern and they would absolutely act. So we waited for your comments on these abysmal findings, and none came. Our questions to you tonight is how much longer you'll make us wait? How much longer will the district ignore special education laws and regulations? How much longer will they write our children's individual education plans to fit the best interest of the district as opposed to the best interest of the child? How much longer will there be a sped wing at Thomas Prince Elementary School? How much longer will you contain our special education students in the windowless classroom of the high school basement? How much longer will you carb and copy our child's IEPs year after year? How much longer will our children's progress reports and IEPs contain completely contradictory information? How much longer will you forbid the district's psychologists and therapists to include recommendations and benchmarks for progress in their reports? How much longer will our district count the heads of aides before telling us in IEP meetings that, sorry, inclusion just won't be appropriate for your child, when the reality is the district would rather banish our children to substantially separate classrooms than hire more aides to facilitate inclusion? How much longer are you going to not support the teachers in our district by providing them with highly-trained paraprofessionals so they can actually facilitate inclusion, allowing our teachers to teach? How much longer will you allow district administration to overrule the findings of the IEP team by changing IEP language and not providing team chairs? The authority to approve services is mandated by law. Heard enough? Thank you.
That the administration is, has examined this report, and it, the comments are in the superintendent's report this evening, and we can take these comments up during that period of time. But there were quite a number of inaccuracies that were detected in this report, and the administration is preparing a response to that report. And this response will be made available to the, to the school committee...